I'm going to ask Randy Cash, a veteran, to come up and make his pledge. Is loose band in the way of the bloodsweaters?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you all for coming. I'm going to start the proceeding here with just a couple, some short statements, and then I'll go through the form after the form and then we'll get going. Education is our children. The education of our children is the most important contribution we make to both their future and the future of our constitutional republic. Today, our four public schools are well behind most of the other states. We rank 47th out of 50 on nationally normed ACT tests. Fifty percent of our 2.8 million students in Florida can't read or do math at grade level. The curriculum has become politically charged, teaching socialism, religious indoctrination, undermining our constitutional values, and in many cases, subjecting children to age-inappropriate sexually explicit material. If you'd like to see the proof of that, you can go to our website and just type in "objectional materials report", and you'll see a summary of 70 books, textbooks used throughout Florida that confirm that. Here in Collier County, our public school system has a billion-dollar budget that includes both operating capital, and we have 46,000 students, so we have one of the highest rates per student in the state. Our state grading system declares Collier County's school system to be an A. What they don't tell you is they grade on a curve. So for most of us who went through school, if you're rated on a curve, then the A is, in the case of Florida, is 62%. For some facts, in Florida, we have 2.8 million kids in public schools, we have 346 in private schools, and 84,000 homeschools. By the way, the homeschool went up here to here 15%. On your chairs, you've got four items that were handed out ahead of time. The first is the trifold, the Florida citizens' one is trifold, who we are, what we're about. You have a comparison of Collier County, all of Collier County high schools. And on the left side of that page is a nationally normed result from U.S. News &amp; World Report. And on the right side is our FSA grading system. You also have two questionnaires. We've asked each of the candidates to fill out an issue-based questionnaire and a constitutional questionnaire. And after our second forum in July, we will be publishing those as a voter guide so that you know each of the candidates' positions on those issues and their views on our constitution. We urge you to introduce some of the candidates who decided not to fill it out. I'm not going to call anybody out, but I would urge you to urge every candidate to fill this out because this becomes your way to assess their principles and their views on issues and hold them accountable. And that's the key reason we do that. I want to thank the Sandblond team and Tara McPrayer for helping fund this event tonight. Their support is very important. I also want to, I know we have two elected officials in the crowd. I want to just take a minute and recognize both of them. Bob Rommel, our state representative, and Jennifer Edwards. I saw Jennifer here someplace. I saw Howard Reed come in. I don't know if we have any other city councilor, Howard? Bob Rommel, and that, of course, Jared Goffoni. Chairman, do we have any other elected officials? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, our format for tonight will be as follows. Two students in just a minute, and I'll introduce them. Two students are going to introduce each of the candidates. So one student will introduce, and they'll alternate. One student will introduce a candidate, and then they'll switch back and forth. The questions will then come, one-third from our moderators and two-thirds from you. You should have gotten the three-by-five card when you came in. If you didn't get one and you want one, hold your hand up, and one of the students will bring it to you. That becomes the mechanism for you to write your questions down. So if anybody wants a three-by-five card and didn't get one, we have some student measures over back. We'll bring it to the students. Raise your hand. Once you've completed your question, just raise your hand, raise the card, and they'll come get them, and they'll bring them up to the moderators. We're going to ask the moderators, we've asked them, what, the one-third of the questions up there, and two-thirds from you. Okay? We're going to ask you to please write your question, if you can, in a yes or no format. Would you like to? If you write your question in a yes or no format, then what will happen is the moderators will ask the question, and all of the candidates at the same time, so it doesn't ricochet, all of the candidates at the same time, will say yes or no to the question. And then they'll get a minute to explain your position. Okay? We've done this for a number of years, and it really works well for the audience to know what the positions of the candidates are, and that's why we do it. We are, several of the folks have expressed an interest in being able to ask an individual candidate question. We're going to allow that with a caveat. Be respectful, ask your question, and after the candidate, the candidates will have one minute to respond to any question. And after the candidates who responded to the question directed at them, then all of the rest of the candidates will be given an opportunity to comment if they wish. You don't have to, but you will have that opportunity if you wish. About 6:45, 15 minutes before the close, we're going to stop the questioning. We're going to hand out straw ballots. One per person on our system. You'll get an opportunity to vote that. But I would urge you not to vote that straw ballot until after the closing. Each of the candidates will have two minutes between 6:45 and 7:00 to make their closing statement. And we're going to ask that you all come to the podium to do that. So we just appreciate your cooperation in that. Okay, what I'd like to do now is introduce first the candidates, I mean, the ushers. Vincent, Braglio, am I pronouncing that right? Braglio? Vincent, as you'll stand up. Vincent's going to be doing double duty tonight. He's going to be introducing candidates. He's also going to be our timekeeper. So he'll have red, green, and yellow caution signs for you. So candidates, please pay attention to that. Vincent is a graduating senior. He is number two in his class with a GPA of 5.36, and he will be attending University of Florida in the fall. Haley Vaughn is going to be our, Haley, Vincent up. She's going to be introducing candidates. She's a graduating senior. She is top of her class with a GPA of 5.17 and the president of the student government. Haley is going to be attending FSU in the fall on a full Bright Futures Scholarship. Two ushers on the, I guess one on each side. Morgan Jones is a junior and the top of her class with a current GPA of 5.0. As a rising senior, Morgan has already won the Harvard Book Prize, which acknowledges students for their great potential. Then our last usher is Julia Wagner. She's a graduating senior, headed off to Rona in the fall. Recently crowned our prom princess, and she shines wherever she goes or dances. So if you'll come up to introduce the candidates, and then I'll introduce the two moderators, and we'll get started.
Well, as was said, my name is Vincent Pranial, and I will be introducing Dr. Jory Westbury. Most of us know Dr. Westbury because she taught Tommy Barfield Elementary in 1989 and was later the principal there for 14 years. Today, she forms bonds and relationships in the community is an understatement. But what did she do between 1989 and now, you wonder? She taught middle school English, reading, and social studies, was recognized as a Golden Apple Teacher at Oak Ridge Middle, completed her doctorate in Educational Administration at the University of Miami, was appointed to several administrative positions, including Golden Gate Elementary, where she was recognized as the Assistant Principal of the Year. She retired in 2015, but not for long. She went back to work for Collier County Schools to mentor beginning teachers in the C-SERT program, and I guess she just can't stay away because here she is running for school board. She says, "I found a profession that I can wrap my heart around. Education makes all other professions possible." After Jory Westbury.
Jen Mitchell is a local realtor and mother of three current CCPS students and one recent graduate. She has lived in Naples for nearly 21 years, but she was born and raised in Lafayette, Indiana, where she earned her degree in elementary education from Purdue University. After graduating, she moved here, where she taught four years at Naples Park Elementary before welcoming her first child and making a decision to stay home and raise her family. This allowed her to spend the past 15 years volunteering in children's classrooms, serving on their school PTO boards and advisory councils, as well as participating at the district level on the superintendent's district advisory council and the Champions for Learning Connect Now project to develop a strategic plan of the district. She is running because she truly believes in the mission and the vision of Collier County Public Schools and wants to work to keep it moving in the right direction. So much progress has been made in recent years under the leadership of our current superintendent, but there is still much to be done. She believes that a board that can work collaboratively will be the key to taking the district even further. She is particularly interested in finding ways to increase student achievement, getting our students both kindergarten and college and career ready, attracting and keeping great teachers and support staff, as well as continuing the sound financial management of taxpayer dollars. She looks forward to the opportunity to answer your questions this evening and hopes she can count on your book on August 28th. Jen Mitchell.
Dr. Kathy Ryan has lived in Southwest Florida for 44 years and worked for the Collier County School District for 30 years, where she was a counselor, teacher, and administrator at the middle school, high school, and district levels. 28 years were spent in Amocley, where nine years at the middle school and 19 at the high school. She also spent six years in Michigan as a teacher and counselor at two different high schools. She was born and raised in Detroit. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree in social science and a Master's in counseling from Michigan State University and a doctorate in educational administration from Florida Atlantic University. In retirement, she was hired as a consultant for a charter school company for two years and served as interim high school principal for their Fort Myers site for three months. She served as a member and chair of many committees at both the local and state levels, both during her career and in retirement. She is very familiar with Florida school law, financing, and budgeting. Two honors that she is very proud of having are that the Amocley community held Dr. Kathy Ryan night during halftime at a football game in 2000 and being declared alumna of the year by the College of Education of Florida Atlantic University in 2000. Dr. Kathy Ryan.
Victor Dotres is a Collier County public school teacher and has been with the district for 18 years. He began his teaching career in Amocley at Village Oaks Elementary before transferring to Golden Gate High School, followed by Amocley Middle School. He has held his current position as a technology teacher at a state elementary since 2011 and has coached the Corpus Christi Middle School girls soccer team for two years. Victor, who is 44 years old, is a Miami native and has lived in Southwest Florida since 2001. He is the son of Cuban immigrant parents and the father of two children. His son and daughter both attend Collier schools. Victor will bring a valuable teacher and parent perspective to the school board. He earned a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Painting and Art Education from the University of Florida and is currently working toward an online degree in instructional technology and administration from Lamar University. Victor speaks fluent Spanish and Creole. As a board member, Victor would advocate for there to be at least one colored share of seventy for every 500 students throughout the district. He would also advocate for a greater focus to be placed on encouraging parental development in every grade level because Victor understands that the key to student success comes from the parent. Victor will advocate for a review of current district curriculum programs and will make those which are least effective in the classroom. Victor Dotres.
Darlene Alvarez is a business leader, educator, and most importantly, a mom. All four of her children have been in the Collier County School District, with her youngest currently in middle school at Corpus Christi Middle. Darlene has a Master's degree in marketing from the University of Maryland and is currently working on her doctorate in business management and marketing. Darlene is an adjunct professor at Kaiser University, where she teaches marketing, and she also works as a sales consultant for Paychex. Darlene is running for the Collier County School Board to bring common sense business leadership to the board. One of her primary goals as elected is to expand the trade and vocational training programs so that students who choose not to go to college are ready to enter the workforce immediately after graduation. Darlene Alvarez.
Mary Ellen Cash is a 25-year veteran teacher, counselor, and program specialist. She is nationally certified for grades K-14 in counseling, English as a second language, and Spanish. In Collier County, she has served in Amocley Middle School, Laley High School, Calusa Park Elementary, and Vineyards Elementary, as well as teacher on special assignment developing programs for the migrant education program. She is an adverse specialist and has developed a strong knowledge of best practices needed to help students struggling with academics. She believes in competency-based curriculums that are fact-based and believes that student assessment should be nationally owned. Mrs. Cash believes that class size matters. She is a fiscal conservative that believes in parents' rights and wants to have an active conversation with all stakeholders in the Collier County education process. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in business from the University of Maryland and a Master's degree in counseling from the University of Central Florida. Mary Ellen Cash.
As the current Collier County School Board Chair for District Five, Roy Terry has invested in the future of Collier County Public Schools and the success of our next generation. For the past 39 years, Roy Terry has been a teacher, coach, athletic director, assistant principal, and Collier School Board member. While on the board, Terry assisted with various construction and renovation projects. Terry implemented construction academies for Laley and Palmetto Ridge High, supervised Palmetto Ridge construction. He assisted with Laley's athletic field renovation, and he also developed state's community funfares for Palmetto Ridge High School. Terry holds a Master's degree in education from Colorado State University and a Bachelor's degree in science from Western Maryland College. Terry resides in Naples with his wife, Helen Terry, for 55 years. Their two children graduated from Naples High School, and he is a proud grandparent to four grandchildren. The oldest graduated from Palmetto Ridge High School. Roy Terry.
Thank you, Haley and Vincent. I'm now going to introduce the two moderators. I think for the most part, they don't need an introduction. I'll start with Eugene. Jane Watt is the founder of the Mark Island Academy and is champion of all students. She works tirelessly to see that each student gets the highest quality education possible. So thank you for being a moderator tonight. Jared Goffoni is chairman of the Mark Island City Council. He's been a longtime advocate of improving quality of education in our community. He and his wife Elsa have three children, two attending Tommy Barfield Elementary and a, it says, 11-week-old son. Congratulations. The four are yours.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you to all the candidates who came out tonight to participate. And most of all, thank you to all the citizens who came out to hear the issues discussed and that Jane and I get to ask a few questions tonight. But to be honest, I'm looking forward to asking your questions. Please keep those cards coming so we can ask the candidates your questions. Jane, you want to start us off?
Keith, who do you want to start? Like, which person will answer the first question? Okay, Jory? Then I'll just go down the line, okay? The Naples Daily News editorial board encouraged the school board to change their decision to audit the self-insurance fund and audit the contract management function instead. Do you agree with the Naples Daily News editorial board on this issue?
Yes, I do. I don't think that there is a problem with the...
Can you, excuse me, sorry, Jory. You guys will raise your hands, yes or no, and then we'll get to the answer. Sorry about that. Yes would be to agree with the decision, but no would be to disagree.
Now I can go? Okay.
Thank you.
I agree with the decision because I don't think that the school district should have a problem with assessments and being audited. If there's something that's not quite right, then they deserve the opportunity to fix it. If there's something that we can do better as a school district, then we should do it. And that's why I agree.
I agree with Ms. Westbury. I think there's no reason why they shouldn't have picked a different topic to assess because I think the money lies in the contracts that they give out. Just a few, I think a couple months ago, they sent yea to hundreds, lots of millions of dollars to contracts. So I think that would be the main way you want to look at, if you're going to look at the budget, would be that.
I also disagreed with the school board vote. I agree with the editorial board on this one because the two largest ticket items are the payroll first and then the contracts. And so if we're digging around and we're trying to find money to big teachers, and we are, and we should be, why not go into those two areas first? It makes the most sense to me. I will say, though, I saw the meeting, and the risk assessment team came back with a top 10. And if I understand the conversation, the board has agreed they're going to start taking those items off the list until they get through them. So I would urge the board to, fine, go ahead and do the two that you're going to do, but definitely get those contracts in there. That should be next up if they don't agree to overturn their previous decision.
I'm going to be totally honest, having been able to read the entire report that was submitted. At this point, I'm going to trust the board's decision. However, now that the question has come up, I may go back and try and find the decision and give it more thought. But I'm willing to trust. And by the same token, if they're going to go down the list and check out what the report highlighted at some point, then that's really what the most important issue is. Are they going to get it done? What needs to be done?
Thank you, everyone. So if the budget is our greatest concern, then we need to think outside the box and look at other issues, other opportunities that we have, especially from a free market. I work with other health insurance companies, and if the health insurance rates are raising at 20% per year just based on average organization, I can't imagine how high their rates for the Collier County school system. You have to be able to be creative, to look, treat employees too with Fortune 500 benefits, and be able to look outside Collier County schools and really give teachers what they want.
It's my understanding that Collier County School Board only opted to audit the payroll. So instead of doing the two options of the payroll and the contracting, they just opted to do the one. That's my personal understanding. I really believe in auditing, internal auditing, and I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe that the school board has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that our tax dollars are being used appropriately.
First of all, if I disappear off the end of this stage, it's not because I'm trying to get out of here and not ask you questions. We're kind of grabbed up here on the stage. But anyway, let me go through a little bit about our decision. We did offer to do two, payroll and then also the hospitalization plan. The others, the assessment, risk assessment team came back and gave us 10 areas that we ought to look into. Right now in Collier County, we are going through a three-year audit that started in the spring and will end around the end of October, beginning of November. This takes a lot of time from the people in our district because they have to plan for this, they have to make arrangements for all the things to do the audit. And also, we do a regular audit every year. But we are going to do all 10 risk assessments. I just did not feel that this was the time to put more than two of the items on the agenda for the risk assessment team to go in and look at. Once they get done with that three-year audit, and we're doing a three-year audit because, to be honest with you, our budget has been so good because everybody else does one minute, one audit every year. We've been given the opportunity to do three every three years.
Thank you. And if you could pass the microphone back to Alan, to start with Victor on the next question. Okay, yes or no? Do you support Constitutional Reform Commission Propose 43, which establishes school board member term limits to two, four-year terms? Thank you all.
I think we've seen in the past, the school board, I know all of you here probably know, we've had school board members on there for many, many years. And it took a couple ladies to come in there and shake things up a little bit. Maybe they didn't like that too much, but we had a couple of school board members on there for over a decade. I mean, if you look at those past clips and videos of them, I mean, it stayed the same. It was the same group of people up there, year after year after year. So in this case, yeah, I agree with that. Because after eight years, if you haven't done what you needed to do, then you need to go find something else again.
I actually disagree because I feel like as we continue to pull local control away from Collier County, it becomes very important that your voice is heard, and you do that at the ballot box. This is a local board. We make decisions for your schools in your county. I think it's very important, you know, it's really hard to find great candidates. And so it's something that I think, obviously, if that's the rule, then we all will abide by it. But I really think it's important as citizens that you have as much voice as you possibly can. And I think it's just one way of taking control away from our county.
I have never been for term limits for any kind of legislative body, only for executives, meaning president, governor-type positions. But for legislative bodies, which the school board is more like, I think the ballot box is where you create the term limits. And you either like the person, or you don't. Or in some cases, some of those people continued because they had no opposition. So they were at least willing to stand up and run. So as was stated, just getting people willing to run is also part of the problem. So am I for a mandated term limit for a group like the school board?
So I do agree that we should limit the terms. I'm going to ask one question of the audience. How many of you are happy with the current order of all the decisions that they're making with the school system? Is everybody in here happy? So this is the reason why we're here, okay? So I do believe as time changes, I mean, markets change, the economy changes, our children's change, parents change, right? So as we go through this, I mean, everything seems to change. If we're going back on the status quo, that's the same every single year, then none of us are going to be able to, you know, come up with the same decisions and look at things and keep repeating it. You have to be open-minded. You have to change. You have to change the landscape.
I believe in term limits because I think it's a motivator. If you know you only have four years or eight years to get the job done, you're going to get the job done.
I held up the ballot. I would support that. I'm basically saying that if that's the will of the people, if the people vote that they feel that term limits is necessary, then I could necessarily support them. And my feeling is, is that we've got a lot of people here in town that are still doing great work, that have been there a long time. And when you look at Anna Fiala and Bill Barnett, they're still doing great work for this district. So like I said, it's up to the people in the country, in the state, to vote whether they want term limits or not. I'm willing to continue working as long as I can work.
Victor turned off my mic. I say yes because I don't know if I could last more than eight years with some of the folks. All right. I don't know if I could last more than eight years, but seriously, there are some people who have done some fabulous things for our school board. And there's some that have been somewhat disruptive, but the sharing of ideas, no matter what their term, what the term limit is, is positive. And I think that the voters really do have a big, a big heart in whether you even go on for your second term.
We're going to start with Jen on this one. Marco Island taxpayers paid $51 million to Collier County Public Schools last year. Two of the three schools on Marco Island are charter schools. This year, for the first time, charter schools receive local property tax revenue on a per-student basis. However, districts are suing to stop this funding. Do you support equality of funding for public charter school students on Marco regardless of the outcome from House Bill 7069?
Well, let me start first by saying I met you in this spot. I toured your school, you're doing amazing things. I've not had a chance to tour Marco Charter.
Sorry. Do you support equality of funding for public charter school students on Marco regardless of the outcome from House Bill 7069?
And I'll explain mine because that's not a yes or no question for me, and I'll tell you why. The district is suing because of the question of constitutionality of bundling over 50 items in one bill, and also because of the schools of hope provision. And what a lot of people don't understand is that schools of hope, the state took $240 million out of the public education budget, set it aside to allow them to go in, in this case, Villa Jokes is the only school of our county that would qualify. They've been a D school for two years now. And they would allow a charter to come in and charter that school around. But the problem is, they're not making them go into that building. They only have to be within a five-mile radius of that school. They don't even have to enroll the kids from that school. So they're going to get the same per-student allowance plus an additional $2,000 per student, and they don't have to take the Villa Jokes kids. So I have a problem with the schools of hope provision specifically. If they allow a charter to go in and turn around that school in that building with every one of those kids, I would feel different. But I do not believe in schools of hope as it's written in legislation.
All right. My answer was no based upon the way you phrased the question because you said regardless of the outcome of the legal decision. I'm not going as a school board member, I'm not going to break the law. So it depends what the decisions are, first of all, in terms of the ability of the board to be able to do that. That's question number one.
Can I clarify the question? Because I think it's, I want to make sure that you understand exactly. So there are other districts in the state that share tax dollars with charter schools. Collier County does not. So I don't, I'm not talking about the schools of hope or any other proportion of that. I'm simply talking about would you agree with Collier County Public Schools sharing tax dollars with charter schools or not? It's not, if it's found not, that it's not illegal.
Well, that's what I was starting to say, that first of all, it depends on, does it come out that it's legal? Okay? Which you have just said, that could be. Plus, as I said the other night, part of the problem is, by the time you get around to it, the legislature every year changes the rules on us, which is another unfortunate problem in terms of long-range planning for something like the expenditure of capital funds. So that's another issue. It's, it's not that I'm necessarily in particular the Marco Island Academy getting the money, although you do have the problem of the possibility of opening the floodgates. I would really love to study all the new windows of the law before I did. However, I wasn't totally against Mr. Roy, but Mr. Terry's compromised at the last board meeting, providing some funding.
So this is a decision that I too am torn with on the charter schools, only because the new charter school came right in the street that I live on. So I'm torn in that sense of where it was put. I will say that for charter schools, children don't know whether or not they're in a charter school at night, and that has to be the first priority, is obviously the children. I was concerned too about the safety when I heard about it because I have a middle school daughter that I wouldn't want going to that school where I think that she could be in danger. So I am torn on it, okay? However, I do agree with Mr. Terry when he said he was trying to do his best to put the money towards it and have someone say. But I agree, there should be a solution. I do see that there should be a solution, whether it be, whether some people spoke too. Why can't it go to the public as well if we're talking about spending our own tax dollars? So that's where I'm at.
So Marco Island Academy and Marco Island Charter are both charter schools. They've been charter schools the whole time that I've been at Naples. Well, the academy is, what, 10 years old? Nine years old. So you have to understand historically, Marco Island has been asking to get school, middle school and high school for years. Your developer actually gave land for the high school and is an issue of conservancy with the Eagle on that property. So you paid $52 million in taxes last year for you to ask for your middle schoolers and high schoolers, of which I think you have 300 in high school, 230 in high school, and not many in middle school? Okay, we should help all of our children get a good education. And you as taxpayers are paying 52% if you live in Marco Island and Collier County of your taxes to support the school board. So why shouldn't these Marco Island children get some money back?
Conversation's kind of got off topic here. Basically, what it is, the lawsuit that the other counties are putting forth is in six areas, and there are people, and that has to do with the funding issue. Collier County School Board intervened in the lawsuit, but only in two areas, the state contract and the schools of hope. And now we're going to appeal just the schools of hope. I don't want to get into that because the question is not about schools of hope. The question is about the money. And I would just say that most of the reason, the problem with the money is due to the fact that everything was put into one bill. And it would be very easy for the legislature to come back and do one bill, vote on it, and send it, and put it in the law. And then I'm all for providing that money, which we're doing right now. We're providing that money to the different charter schools.
I had my paddle like this because I agree it's not a yes or no question. My concern is if there's a limited pot of money, and every time a charter school comes on board, and I think charter schools do a good job, especially the two on Marco, then the pot gets smaller and smaller and smaller. So if there is a way to increase funding and add funding for those schools, then that could be a possibility.
All right, well, I'm going to talk as fast as I can because the fake news, Naples Daily, after my first forum, I guess they already chose who they're going to back up in this race. But let me tell you right now, I'm a public school teacher, so when they talk about, oh, they're going to take away the money, I'm not seeing any of the money. The kids aren't losing anything, the lights are still on, everything's still there. So I say yes. Give them three, I think he was the one that went up there and he said, give us at least $3 million first year, next year, another $3 million. I don't see any problem with that. This is, and Mrs. Westbury, when she said she disagreed, well, this is part of being on board. We can disagree on things and still be amicable people and be decent people. And I understand what her point was, that if you do this now and we give them the money, then every charter school is going to want money. The Naples Daily said Mr. Dotres wants to give all the charter schools all the money. That's not what I said. In this case, if I lose this race based on this decision, I don't care. So Peter, we give them the money to eat, she created that school not to make money, she wasn't pulling her hands together saying, I'm going to make millions of dollars. She created that school to help the kids. And we're all up here, and if we're here for the kids, let's help these kids. So I said, yes, just give the money to them, let them keep the school safe. I'm all in.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Dr. Ryan, but this isn't exactly a yes or no question, but it's an audience question, and I think it's a good one, so I'll continue. Collier County has one of the highest dollars per student ratios, just under $22,000 per student. We are paying for filet and getting spoiled horse meat. How do you plan to improve results with lower costs? Basically, the Collier County has a $22,000 per student ratio. How do you plan to improve results with lower costs?
Well, I don't agree with that number. That's to start with. I don't know where that number came from. The, talking about the, I assume that somewhere in there is buried the fact that we have a billion-dollar budget and how we allocate that. For those who are not familiar, it is broken into two parts, and the state tells us how we can spend the money. You have the facilities part that comes down, and we're told, and that comes from your property taxes. And then the other piece that comes from the state that tells you to ask for instructional purposes. So first of all, where the money comes from and how you divide it up and how you can spend it is very much dictated by the state of Florida. And once again, the legislature makes those decisions. So not all of it comes down to what we as a board can do. Because since we've only got a minute, trying to discuss a budget in a minute is very difficult.
Well, I'm Lila, I'm a doctor in business management. So you have to investigate way and implement based on the rules and regulations of the state, I understand. However, I think that it needs to be looked at in depth. I do think that we have to look at risk assessments, we have to look at financial planning, we have to look at a plethora, ooh, that's a big word, a plethora of things, okay? It's a complete package. It's not just one piece here, one piece here, one piece here. We have to look at the entire budget and look at everything. We might not be able to cut costs, obviously, on teacher salaries, but maybe we can cut costs on some of the other programs that we offer that kids aren't utilizing. Everything has to be looked at, everything has to be utilized, and everything has to be strategized as well.
So I know the way Collier County works as far as program budgeting specifically because that's what I did. They give you a budget and then they give you a task. And basically, it's up to the program developer, in my situation with the microprogram, on how you use those dollars. The most important thing is the strategic plan. You've got to follow the curriculum and the strategic plan. I think our strategic plan is too general. I don't think we optimize and control as much as we should as a policy, a policy developing group. I think we need to be more specific. For example, competency-based curriculum. Right now, we don't have competency-based curriculum. If we had a competency-based curriculum, our teachers would be checking the students before they go on to the new subject matter. And until they learn the material, they keep checking those students. That's what we need to do. We need to support them more so that we get better results for our tax dollars.
To discuss the budget, it'd take more than one minute. It's a very complicated issue, and I would suggest that if anybody really has any questions about it, they call the district and talk to Mr. Spencer. But there are a lot of things that are included in that budget that are not in the money. For example, debt service is included in the budget, which is huge. And that's a lot. I think in my discussions with Mr. Spencer, we're really at about $660,000 per million. And so I think we need to sit down and look at the budget. We need to do what's right for our children, our students in the schools. 97% of our operating budget is spent on the schools and at the schools. So I'm very happy for that. We also get extra money because we live in a high, high-spend area where it costs us more to operate our schools than in other districts. We also get more money because we have the highest exceptional education students in the state, 13% of our population, and the microstudents, 8.6%. So we get more money in our budget for those items. So it's not all just a billion-dollar budget.
Mr. Terry, is $22,000 per student, correct? Mr. Terry? What is the per-student amount?
The general fund is $9,367.
Thank you. $9,000 and something.
General fund.
General fund, okay. All right. The question was, how would you improve the education with less money, correct? I think that our district has done an exceptional job over the years in cutting back where they can. I know when I was working with the school district, we were solicited for ideas every single year, and a major committee met every single year for cost-cutting. And a lot of things have been put into place. Let me give you one example. They determined that if we turned the lights off in classrooms, when we weren't in the classrooms, we could save a ton of money. And we did. And there's a lot of strategies like that that can be implemented to save money for the district.
Mr. Terry's right. One minute to explain a billion-dollar budget, especially of a teacher. I'm not going to even try to go at that, but I'll tell you this. All you need to know is $1 billion. And I'm a school teacher, and I'm not seeing much of that, to be honest with you. I get two paychecks every month. One goes to my rent, the other one goes to my car, food, electricity. So I understand the money's not going where it's supposed to be. And this figure, they have all this billion, a billion dollar, millions and millions of dollars, and they divide it up, and they come with a nice, they're going to say, we're spending this much on the student. It's not true. We're wasting money. There's plenty of money in there, and we're wasting it, I believe, on these contracts, these millions of dollars. They're not the, I believe, the way we bid for these contracts. We need to do a better job of bidding. We have to open the bidding process to a lot of these companies. And I don't want to hear any of these candidates up here saying, we'll see if we can find money to pay teachers. There is money in there to pay teachers. Stop spending it on things that we don't need, let's spend it on the things that are important, and ask the students and the teachers to deal with them on a daily basis.
So thank you for that question. I think at the outset, I should tell you, I completely disagree that we're getting chopped liver. And we are getting filet. And I think we have parent surveys, that 92% of parents in Collier County say that we are A or B at least school, that their children attend A or B schools, they're very satisfied with the education their kids are getting. As far as the budget, $1 billion, we have about $220 million in capital reserves that we don't touch. We have about $75 million in operational reserves we don't touch. We have debt service of $52 million. So those all add up, really, you're left with about $650, okay? And as Dr. Ryan said, the state mandates which buckets you get to pull from, for which items. So it's really easy to say, take that $1 billion and divide it by 49,000 students, which I think is probably what happened, but there's more to it. And I would recommend you go online to collierschools.com, take a look at the budget. You can type the word budget into the search bar, and they'll give you pie charts even, so you can see exactly where the money's going. But I think it's really important to note, too, our district is going to be debt-free in nine years. I can own another district in the state of Portland and say that.
This is going to start with Salmaris. Okay. The majority of Florida district school boards have an attorney that works directly for the board, as is allowed under Florida law. Collier's attorney works for the superintendent, which could create a conflict of interest. Would you support a change to this relationship?
Definitely support a change to this relationship. And the reason for this, I mean, I am going to bring up that I do work for Paychex, and I don't know if many people know this, but Paychex is voted the most ethical company in the U.S., okay? I believe in ethics. I believe in high standards. I have an HR certification that I have to hold, and I have to do everything by the book. I understand how important it is to have two attorneys, because I think that we need to be represented, and I believe that Dr. Patton should have her own attorney.
When I started in the school system, the school board attorney did work for the school board, and he used to sit on the other side of the dais. I remember that very specifically. And then when Dr. Patton came in, the school board voted to let the attorney work directly for her. That was a school board vote. I do believe that that creates a conflict of interest, and it skews opinions. In case you didn't know, the school board also has a $500,000 budget for legal consultation that they implemented way before we even filed the House Bill 769 lawsuit. So if the legal issue is not clear, we need to make that clearer.
I personally think that Mr. Fishbain does an excellent job with our school system as our attorney. He represents the district, and within that district, it's the superintendent and the school board. If there becomes a conflict of interest, then we go to an outside agency, and we hire an attorney to come in and work with the school board. So I just don't see any need with spending more money hiring another attorney. So far, we've been doing very well with the ones that we have.
I didn't think it was here. In my experience in the school district, from the time that Mr. Fishbain became one of the attorneys for the school board, I have been nothing but impressed with him. He follows the law. He cites... He does his research. He is impeccable in terms of helping even teachers if they have a question, or administrators if they have a question. It's not just limited to the school board and the superintendent. He's available to all of us to give us the best advice possible.
Yeah, I love my power for agreeing, because I believe the school board does need its own attorney. And Mr. Fishbain is a good guy. He's a good man. He's obviously doing a great job, because he's been there for so many years. But I do think it would help the school board just to have another attorney there to give them a separate consultation, so that they have their attorney, the superintendent has hers. And that way, in the public's eye, everyone's being dealt fairly. So I'm all for that, and I'm glad Mrs. Cash brought that up. There's money there to hire. Simple, available, and we have an attorney for the school. So I'm with that.
I actually was at the meeting when Ms. Lifter brought up the idea of needing a attorney to represent Andrew to the board. I think it's unique to our district, because there's a lot of contention on the board. It's very deeply divided. So I kind of looked into that, and I look around the state of Florida, other districts handle it just like we're handling it. They call in. They don't have two separate attorneys, one for the superintendent. They just call in another attorney, an outside attorney, if need be, if that request of that. So it seems to be best practice throughout the state. To this point, I don't think it's been necessary. So that's what I would say to that question.
I've been here long enough to have gone through several school board attorneys over the years. Mr. Fishbain is probably one of the best that we've had. I said yes to the issue, but not from the standpoint of would I be in favor of two full-time school board attorneys. Most of the issues that the district has to deal with can be handled by the school board attorney, because most of the issues are for things like exceptional student education issues or disciplinary issues with students. That's the big part of his job. You don't see that on television, but that's the big part of his job, is making sure that the school system gets through all of those issues and potential lawsuits without becoming a lawsuit. So I agree that if there are special circumstances, then the board needs to be able to hire somebody to take care of those special interests, but not a full-time. We're already arguing about there's too many hired people at the top.
This is another audience question. In a post-partum world, yes or no, do you agree that in Collier County, school resource officers should be placed at all schools in the district at full-time, including charter schools? Ms. Cash?
Okay, so I've never been in a school in Collier County where there wasn't a YRD. And as a counselor, they were sometimes my best friend. I actually had YRDs that went to visit the home where there was insensitive incest involved, where there were issues of questionable behavior of parents and the way they're treating the child. And they have intervened in a very positive manner. We've worked and saved a lot of children. So I really believe in the youth relations deputies.
I think the safety and security of our children is our most important thing that we have to do here in Collier County. I think that all children should go to school and feel safe, so that they can learn, learn effectively, and then go on to college or to work, wherever they need to go. I think that we have deputies in every school in Collier County. Some may have more. And the sheriff's office in the district has worked together very well, and that's been in place for quite a while. I think we also need to step up with our mental health assessments and also working on mental health with our students. Those that need help need to be able to secure it. We need to provide the psychologists and the others that we need in the district to be able to take care of that need. As I said, to start out with, the health and welfare of our children is our most important job.
I agree with Mr. Terry, and I want you to understand that in all the schools I've worked in, there has been a professional, conscientious, well-trained YRD, which stands, if you don't know, Youth Relations Deputy. They are amazing. They are involved with kids. They have lunch with them. They listen to them. They are often told things that we, as teachers and administrators, are not privy to, and they can act on those things before something happens. I also agree that we want the professionals there. We do not want our teachers or anyone else to be carrying us.
I got to make this clear, because I know the Naples Daily is going to report something differently. I support all the school deputies that are in the schools, okay? I go and shake each one of their hands every morning at school, and I say, "Thank you, officer, for keeping us all safe." And I do that every single day to each one of the deputies. So I hope they will report that. The second thing is, in 2016, I have emails showing that I was talking to Sheriff Rumbus about getting us a deputy full-time at our school, because we were sharing deputies. And I know a lot of teachers will tell you, there's a lot of schools that were sharing deputies. Until that horrific incident happened, Broward, that's when Sheriff said, "Okay, now I've got to get these guys and pay them overtime and make sure we have one at every school." So I think that's terrific, and I've been calling for that for two years. But that's what a teacher perspective gives you, because I'm in there. I can tell you, hey, this is how you can keep our children safe. Now, spending a half million dollars on a camera outside the door to show your license is not going to stop someone from doing damage to the school or their children. If I get a weapon, I go to the school, and I'm going to knock on their front door, take out my license, and say, "Here I am." Open the door, and then I'm going to do my damage. That's why I said in reporting the paper, I think it was a waste of money. There's other ways to spend the half million dollars to harden the word "harden our schools." I'm all for hardening schools. I work at a school. I want to be safe, too. So I don't know what else to say. I support our deputies. I support our sheriff. So I say, "One for every 500 students," because we still have enough.
So to that point, in order to meet the new state legislative mandate of one for 1,000, I've seen the number go up to $26 million. That's the projected budget to do that, one for 1,000 in our schools here in Collier County. The budget currently is $8 million, funded completely by Collier County Sheriff's Office. I was pleased to see them responding for deputies in every crisis school and charter school immediately after. We're very grateful in Collier County. We've had a relationship with the deputies, the deputy program since 1979. So the deputy in our schools in some way, shape, or form since then. I am confident in their ability to keep our kids safe, so that we don't count armed teachers. But I think in terms of one for 500, one for 1,000 is going to be tough, because it's going to jump up to $26 million, because one for 500 would be very difficult to do.
Yes, part of the... Certainly, I am very much for the deputies in the school. They do a fine job. I've been around since they were first put in the school. But I was talking to a deputy the other night, and one of the big problems is going to be, to get them staff right now, they're taking deputies off the road. Normally, in the past, YRDs have been pre-trained with the idea of working with the kids in the school. All the deputies don't have the temperament, willingness, et cetera, to really want to be in the schools. It takes a different type of deputy to want to be a YRD. His concern is, are we going to be able to find enough people willing to do the job? And that's going to be an issue. Certainly, we're for it, but are we willing to do it? And when we hear the big number coming down from the state, I want to remind people, $60 million divided between 67 counties doesn't come out a whole lot of money per county.
Well, definitely, as I drop my daughter off each day in the middle school, I do hope that she is protected with every bit of the Collier County can do, especially with the deputies in the school. But I also believe it comes down to communication within the school with the kids and the teachers, and not be afraid to see something. I want to know that my daughter's school is proactive and not reactive, that if a child sees something, then they can report it without any hesitation. An open-door policy, so children can report things, as well as teachers as well, and nobody should be afraid to say anything. I also believe that this is why I believe in the training for the school. Whoa, what would happen if we had a police academy with our high schools? Now we're talking.
Okay, we're going to start with Mr. Terry. How can we improve technical job training offered at Collier High Schools? The question is, how can we improve technical job training offered at Collier County High Schools?
Well, of course, you could improve it by offering more technical job training. That would be helpful, but right now, we have many academies at our high schools at this time. Most high schools have at least four or five academies. They have academies in finance. They have academies in engineering. A lot of them, a couple of them have academies in construction. So we're implementing technical training in our high schools as much as we can, as often as we can. I think that one of the big things that we have been doing in the high schools is we've been improving our rigor and academic achievement through the use of the PACE program, the AP program, and dual enrollment, which gives us a lot of higher-level programs in our schools for students to be able to pick up on and to reach higher levels of academic training. With the technical aspect, we have culinary. In most of our high schools, we have a lot of different academies that are providing technical training to our high school students.
Go back to Ms. West, all right?
I need to address something that maybe you don't know about, and that is our Lorenzo Walker Institute of Technology, which is called ELWIT, and ITech, which is a modeling technical school in Amok. These two amazing programs for our students are without a higher level. Students can take a 20-hour course, a 30, a 40, a 200-hour course for a fraction of the money that it would take for them to go to college. All students are not college-bound, right? And so the prediction is that I think it's 70... Correct me if I'm wrong down there. 70% of the professions in the future will not require a college degree. So we have to provide opportunities for our students that they can take other coursework and have a profession when they finish. Let me name a few of them. You can take cosmetology. You can take nursing. You can take a welding course. You can take all kinds of computer technology, mechanics of airline mechanics, and all kinds of other stuff.
That's a great question, because both of my brothers never went to college, and they make more money than I do. So you don't tell me that going to college is the answer to everything, because it's not. Some people are not. And it took me eight years to get into college. I was the first one in my whole family to ever go to Harvard College, University of Florida, and managed to graduate after eight years of his time. So I understand that. And instead of... You see, and this is again where we go with a teacher perspective. Instead of spending millions and millions of dollars just throwing up another high school, why don't we open another technical school? You know, let's use that money wisely. I think a lot of our students would benefit from some of that type of schooling than necessarily pushing them into going into college and ragging a bunch of debt, and that's not what their passion is. One of our fellow board members, Mr. Carter, wouldn't always stand on roll for our students. I mean, this guy, he went to a vocational school. It was Lorenzo Walker. And he ended up getting his certification, whatever it was, opening his own business. Now he's got his own shop, and he makes more money than me, too. So don't tell me that you need to go to college to be successful, because you don't. If you work hard and play by the rules, you can do it.
I think in Collier County, as Ms. Westberry said, there are so many opportunities for our students. Airline mechanics licenses, academy equipment licenses. We have kids that graduate from high schools, go to ITech college, and they come out, they're making $60,000, $70,000 a year at 19-years-old. I mean, we have great opportunities. They need to be expanded. There are really so many seats in those schools. And so I would say the answer, as Mr. Terry said, is to expand those opportunities by funding more seats at schools like those that exist at Lorenzo Walker and Amok Technical Center.
Yes. The other night at the board meeting, I heard somebody touting a high school as being really great, because 100% of its graduates went on to college, and that everybody should have 100% of its graduates going on to college, when yet the population and the job market only requires 25% of our graduates to go on to college. So something's wrong with the math there. Really, if you have not been to either Lorenzo Walker or the Amok Technical Center, I would urge you to go there. They have programs called Career in a Year. And students, when they can get a full-bleh certification and a career, as was stated, where they're making more starting salaries greater than our starting teacher salaries after a year with little or no debt. So we have a tremendous system that's out there. Nobody's going to say we can't make something better, but we have a great system, probably one of the best in the state.
This is the one that's passionate for me. Okay. Just using Lorenzo Walker and ITech, we would not have to already fill 4,500 jobs that are open right now currently in Collier County. I speak with hundreds of businesses within Collier County, and we were all... and we were all looking to fill that gap in employment, okay? My husband owns an excavation company. We've been looking for a lower operator for eight months, I cannot find one. We have to bring up these students. Those students, I knew when my boys didn't want to go to college. I knew that back in 10th grade. So letting parents know that there's a solution for their children before we even get to high school, that's where we have to start. You have to start in middle school, you have to let parents know they have an option. We have to give these kids an option, because that's what we need in Collier County. Look, we're looking at an economic turn, because we don't have those positions. How many of us have to wait six hours or more just to get an oil change? Do you know why? There's not a job, jobs that fill them, okay? Businesses are hurting. If you want to boost our economy, keep the kids here, get them trained, get them up to speed, and allow our business owners to grow, because our business owners can't even get the contracts that they want to get, because they can't fill the gap in their employment. This is why I'm firm, and I believe, that we should definitely extend all technical programs within the Collier County Schools, says Dr.
I believe in career education, and I'm one of the proponents of starting in 6th and 7th grade to develop the portfolios so students understand more or less what type of degree they might be interested in when they graduate from high school. We presently have Monkley High School is information technology. Naples High is engineering, which of course, they teach some type of technology. Lally High School has aviation technology. And Lally also has information technology. Barry Collier has engineering and information technology. These are ranked programs by the NAS Distinguished and Model Academies. So we already have these technology programs in place. I believe what we're doing a bad job of is preparing our kids to choose those programs and plan for those programs, and that's what that portfolio program is all about. And preparing them to, to develop their career education plan. Thank you.
Okay, candidates, we are just a couple minutes away from the closing statement portion of the evening. We've got a lot of questions, so I'm going to do a little bit of a lightning round here, where you just raise your paddle, show yes or no, and we'll move on to the next one, just so the audience has another question to answer. First one, yes or no, do you favor allowing non-school board members and staff to determine textbook and curriculum content? Yes or no, would you support the re-aptral of Track K, as many say consisting of bracels was undervalued? Yes or no, do you agree with the current school board's early renewal of the CCPS superintendent contract? Yes or no, do you agree with the current school board's early renewal of the superintendent's contract? Yes or no, do you believe that charter schools have the same requirements and supervision as traditional public schools? This, this one came up earlier with some of their answers, so I'd like to give everyone. Yes or no, do you support allowing properly-trained and certified teachers and administrators to carry concealed weapons on school grounds under voluntary martial programs? Yes or no, will you vote to freeze the property tax billage rate for the CCPS at rollback for a minimum of three years? And last question, yes or no, do you support parents having the right, without retribution, to opt out of FSA or standard assessment, other high states' tests? Thank you, candidates. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Quaid, who can get your closing statements.
Thank you, candidates. We have, the two of ladies are going to be passing out their absentee ballots. One per person, it's on the opposite. I don't mean absentee ballot, I'm sorry, the straw ball ballot. Straw ball ballot. So make sure you give them one. Each of the candidates should give one as well. So what we're also asking, and you'll see this is really helpful, we're putting out a press release on this. So in addition to your voting for the, you get to vote for one candidate in each district, so you're going to get three votes on this straw ballot. But we also have a section there in the middle where you can put down, what are the two most important issues to you that you're looking for in this, this school board to press? So we would ask you to write those down. We'll look at a press release tomorrow, and we'll have the winners of the straw ball, but also emphasize those two issues. Just so everybody knows, you don't need to fill out your, until you hear the closing statements, you don't, we're not asking you to fill out before you're done, that's what we do. But once you're done, and before you all leave, we're going to be asking the four students to tally these out. We won't touch them all, it's a different result. Okay, does everybody, does everybody who wants a straw ballot have one? Okay, I don't see any yet, so. I'll just talk over to the operators, but we're going to start the closing statements. And again, as a reminder, we're going to ask each of the candidates to, to come here.
Okay, each candidate, you'll have two minutes for your closing statement. Well, this time we'll turn it the other way around, the straw ball, Mr. Terry, and then we'll talk with the candidates. Thanks.
First of all, first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming this evening. Good crowd, good discussion. I would like to say, to be honest, the first, I'm effective, the first district to take over the satellite ITech in Golden Gate Area. I would like to announce that the school district is opening up a satellite in the Golden Gate Area connected with ITech. So we are getting more of that in place. Secondly, I honestly expected to receive a question on the decision of the Track K situation. Been a good life, visit with me afterwards. I'd be more than glad to talk to you about that. So if you are interested in that, please see if you can work with me. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve the students, parents, and community the past eight years. I am running again in order to maintain the positive momentum we've established this past eight years. My only guide is to do what is right for our students in Collier County. Our students are our most important asset, and our teachers are not far behind. We need to make sure we take care of both. I feel I have served our district well, and most will feel the same way. I want to continue to work with you and make this district, move this district forward. I'm asking for your vote on August 28th, and I would remind you that you vote for all three districts. You have a vote, just don't vote for your district, you vote District 1, 3, and 5. We would appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Ms. Catherine.
First of all, I want to thank the Southwest Florida citizens of my mind for the opportunity to be here and support the Marco Allen Academy. The primary role of this board is to plan and supervise and establish policy based on state statutes. I personally don't agree with the observation that the superintendent is a CEO. I believe that the superintendent is a public servant, as are the school board members, and that we should be held accountable by the taxpayers for every single penny that we spend. We need to support all students in Collier County. Charter schools exist because parents are not happy with traditional schools. My Marco Allen Academy is not a safe facility. Open campus with corridors is just not a safe place for your children. All you asked for was 8.1 million dollars. Just last year alone, you gave the county, the school board specifically, 52 million dollars. I hope that you will make your vote count on August 28th, and you will marry all in cash the school board. I will support your schools here at Northland. Thank you.
I'm here to ask everybody for a job, a very important job. I understand that funding high schools, I know that there are hard training programs going on right now, but we're not giving those jobs to assassins, okay? I'm the co-chair of the NAP Board. When I go out, I talk to my clients, I look for internships personally to build them for each of our children that have them. I look for backgrounds. I know what, where. There's a gap on women, and I don't know if you noticed, but there's 10,000 baby boomers that reach the age of retirement dating where they want to move. Collier County. Using these programs and doing something with the trades, it's going to boost our economies. As we're looking for these jobs to fill, not just in the trades, we need to build that home. We need to build practical, we need to build construction. We have a lot to prepare, and the two schools that we have now that are very for Lorenzo Walker, for both of them, and carrying it up together, working together, peacefully. But we have to do more. We have to do more for our children. We have to give every child the right choice, to be able to make the choice based on what they want, not the work satisfaction that they have. And I want to make it in all of high schools, so that we don't have to have transportation. I've had private conversations with business owners, that guess what? They're willing to pay for these programs. They're willing to come in, business owners are willing to come in and trade our children for what's right in this economy. My name is Darlene Alredz, I'm running for District 5, and I have a new vote for me on August 28th. Thank you.
Everybody see me? First of all, I want to thank the Florida citizens of my mind for hosting this and for all of you coming out to be here to listen to us. And it would be my honor to serve as your school board member from District 3. Having been an educator for 37 years and 30 years here in Collier County, I really care about public schools, and I don't feel my job is done. That's why I want to continue contributing. In obtaining the doctorate, I was required to study board school law and finance, leaving me with an understanding of how these functions work. This will allow me to be a productive board member from day one. Our teachers, whom we entrust to educate our youth, deserve higher pay and tenure to ensure that we track the best and the brightest. I also pledge to stand for the equal treatment of all students and staff and to protect against censorship. In retirement, I knowledge every deal of my time through many student activities, so I'm very involved with the school community and with the League of Women Voters and the American Association for University Women. Last year, I had the privilege to serve on four different textbook committees. American History, American Government Economics, and the Social Studies of Life. It was quite an experience, and I learned a lot. Let's continue to move the district forward. We have a great, great school district. I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Jen Mitchell. I am running because I truly believe in the mission and conditions of Collier County Public Schools. I can get a lot of things right. It's perfect, but I can get a lot of things right. In the last six, seven years, we have jumped from ranking 33rd to 67, excuse me, from 33rd to number five of 67 counties in this state. We have a greater graduation rate by 16 percentage points to the insert point, five minutes or four. One of the things that you mentioned was that everybody does a beat on a lot, because the hoops that we have to jump through have changed. And the fact is, that's the legislature, that's not our legislature. They're the ones that change the phone numbers. So our district is meeting at CD bills, 16 percentage points increase in our graduation rate. We have the NAMCabs, all high schools, we have a lot of classes, they're a middle school. We have the HBRD programs, the Y-Ache group. We have the elementary, the elementary school. Lots of progress has been made, despite having to do the right schoolwork. We've done it despite a lack of funding, improper funding of public education from our legislature. And so I would ask that we elect a board that is willing to work together to fix those things that need fixed, but truly be willing to take a look and figure out the best way to move forward. Focus on things like, if you see students, focus on things like the recent parent involvement, talk reward activities, and opportunities for technical training, quality of career readiness, kinder readiness, those types of things. And attach really strong metrics to those. This next board is going to be developing a new strategic plan. Ms. Catherine, she believes in the district, the district plan isn't median enough. Well, let's make it more rigorous. Let's attach stronger metrics to that. So those are two things I would like to focus on, and I think we have a board that's willing to work together. We're moving it down to 2,000, together. I hope I can come on to vote on August 28th. Thank you.
First, thank you very much for being here. Thank you to the Fortis's Alliance for organizing this. I want to start off by asking, are there any veterans of Collier, current veterans here in the audience? Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, guys. Thank you, too, thank you. It's because of the brave men living, like you and my father, who served in the military, that I even get to be right here, standing here, asking you to vote for me to represent the school board. So thank you, guys. God bless you for doing that. Now, I believe that the school board has, Mrs. Wood Bradley, who has kids in the school district, she has a kid in the game, Mr. Carter has a kid in the game. I also have a kid in the game. I have a couple of kids. So as a parent, I'm bringing a parental perspective, and I'm also bringing a teacher perspective. Hey, listen, I'm not the greatest teacher, and I hope now I'm winning teaching. And Mrs. Westbury, but I do my best, I work hard. I've never woken up and said, hey, I can't, I can't go to work. I always look forward to going to work. I love my job. And I think the school board, right now, we need that. We need both a parent perspective and a teacher perspective, because the way we're spending the money, like I just said, the example with the security. Ask the teachers, ask the teachers about the curriculum. Ask the teachers how we should make the schools safer. Ask the teachers how we can better educate the students. And I think that's what we're lacking right now. I don't think right now we have anyone on the board with current teacher perspective. Now, I know we have some great candidates up here with years and years of experience, more than I have. And that's a lot of experience there. What I'm going to provide you is an inside look, inside the kitchen. Okay, because what happens is, we have teachers cooking in the kitchen, developing these lesson plans, feeding them to the students, feeding them knowledge. And then we have people up here throwing pepper and salt and a rag that went to the pot and saying, oh, this is going to taste good, just shove it in there, and they'll load it. But that's not the way it works. Again, with the money, with the Marco Allen Academy. Again, with the money, with Marko Allen Academy, I'll do whatever I can to make sure that you guys get the money to keep your students safe, what have we each of you been doing? You know, so I'm holding for that, I'm holding for the kids, and I believe all of us here, if we weren't in this for keeping kids safe, making kids the best they can be, we wouldn't be up here right now. So, before I time it down, he flips that red one, I do have to plug in my little envelope right here, I could use your assistance, so if you want to throw in a check for any amount of money, I would really appreciate it, because money in campaign on teacher salary isn't easy, and I would take your money gladly, and I'll use it, and I promise you this, if you'd like me to ask you next time, remember, I will work my tail off to represent you and the kids. Thank you very much, God bless everybody.
I'm going to make this short and sweet. And the last one, aren't you left? In closing, it's no secret that I'm dedicated to education, even after all these eons, I mean years, twenty-six to be exact. Our students, families, and teachers are the key to that dedication, and I believe in supporting them any way I can. Number one, my goal is to continue forward progress that we've made in our district in academics, academies, the arts, and athletics, because that's what makes well-rounded students. Number two, I want work on increasing early identification of mental illness and how to deal with it properly. This may have a significant effect on later behavior or behavior. Number three, bring out the best in our teachers, so they can perform at their optimum levels, and increase participation of all of our stakeholders in Collier County. What I stand for, courage, civility, and collaboration, civic and visible responsibility, and a positive approach to decision-making. I'm running for school board from District 1, and I ask for your vote on August 28th, or earlier, if you're voting by mail. Thank you all for coming tonight.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the candidates who put themselves out and run for school board in this required races, no easy task, and they all deserve our thankful appreciation. Join me in thanking the candidates. Thank you, Jane and Jared, for coming. And I give a special thank you to our students. From a next steps point of view, from what we're doing from Florida citizens' alliance' point of view, we should have the video out in a couple days, posted on our website. I encourage you to share that with your friends. Those folks that have already gone north, we'd like an opportunity for them to meet the candidates and hear what their views are on issues. We're going to be doing the July Forum, we're still sorting out the location, but it'll be around the sixteenth through seventeenth of July in Naples itself, just before the absentee ballots go out. We've also decided, and this, can't tell you how many people come to me during the party and say, who should I vote for? Particularly for judges, right? Particularly for judges that are hardworking. We're going to be working with Christian Family Coalition, we're going to be doing a series of interviews for county commission, for school board, for judges that have open races, and we'll be putting out voter guides duly branded by Florida Citizens Alliance and the Christian Family Coalition. We'll be putting those out in time for you to receive those prior to the absentee ballots. So, please pay attention to that. My last request, and I think Victor would want to. These are not any expensive ones, we have some donors that help with that, but if you're wanting to put the money in the pot, it helps to free the expenses for Florida citizens. So, please do that on the way out. And again, I want to close by thanking you all for coming, some of you came down from Naples, and they're here with Marko Allen, so thank you for crossing the bridge of that bridge. And hopefully, we'll turn the vehicle, we can do one out in Naples if we want. Have a great evening, I'll close, thanks for your time.